Eternal God, our Father, Lord God, we come again saying thank you, Lord God. Lord God, as we enter this holiday season, Lord God, continue to keep each and every one of our residents safe, Lord God. Lord God, continue to cover our police and our fire, our students in school, and our teachers and our staff. Lord, we thank you on all these things that we do act in Jesus' name, amen.
Please. Roll call.
Alexander.
Present.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakos.
Here.
Warple.
Here. Let the record show nine are present, zero absent, all are in chambers. Item number three, Mayor.
Hi, everybody. Nice to see you all. Sorry, it's been a couple of meetings since I've been here. I appreciate being able to appear before you and speak, as I usually do before the council meetings. I see there's a lot more people in the audience, and that's my fault. So, I want to start off the meeting with a mistake that I made, and I want to walk back that mistake, and I'm going to ask the council for its cooperation. I hate making mistakes, but I make a lot of decisions, and sometimes I drop the ball, and I apologized to all the residents, especially Robertson that are here, and they're angry because their city government didn't let them down. I want to point out that I was not the only person involved in this situation in my administration, but one thing I've learned about being Mayor is when you do well, everybody's patting you on the back, and they want to be in the picture, and when your team messes up, there's nobody standing by your side. And here I am, standing before you, and I want to explain how this mistake happened. I'm talking about Forsyth Square, which is an area founded on the north by 119th Street, on the west by Forsyth Square, and on the east by Warwick. You know, we're always very aggressive about trying to build single-family homes in the city Hammond. We had this green space that has not been designated as a park. I know it's been used as a park, it's a green space in Robertson. It's been there, I don't know, I think 50-plus years, probably even longer than that, a green space, it's just never been designated as a park, it's never been designated as a business area, just sort of a green space that's been maintained by the city. The idea was raised in my administration, not by me, but by my team, which makes me responsible, that we should look at this area to develop single-family homes. Now, this wasn't at the top of my priority list, I'll be honest with you, we have a lot of things going on. This wasn't the number-one burning issue in the city Hammond, and it didn't really get the amount of attention from me that I probably should have given to it, okay? I have a lot of balls in the air, this was one of them, but it wasn't the biggest and the heaviest ball, it was in the air. And this proposal works its way through the council, and I'm not faulting anybody on the council at all, this is my fault, works its way through the council, still many balls in the air, this is one of them, gets through the council, hits my desk, I signed it. But I remember right before I signed it, I was like, "What? We're going to turn that little green grass strip into a house?" And then I was like, at that point, like, this is my fault, that if I'm questioning it at this point, because it's obviously gone through all the channels, it's gone through the council, it's gone through my departments, so if I veto it at that point, I'm vetoing the process that started in my own administration. So, I weakly signed it. Weakly, I shouldn't have. I knew I was doing the wrong thing. And coincidentally enough, that night, I'm speaking to the Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch, and I got my butt kicked that night on a number of issues, but this was one of them. And it bugged me, because I literally was just thinking about whether or not I should sign this ordinance, and then I go to the Crime Watch, and there was understandably neighbors that are like, "What? You're getting rid of this green space in my neighborhood? Nobody even talked to us." You know, I acknowledge. It was a mistake, and I signed it. And when I drove around that night, thinking to myself how much I let the residents down, and how much I tried to partner with the residents, and how this wasn't partnering with the residents, this was giving the residents the middle finger, I decided I made a huge mistake. And I reversed course completely that night, and I apologized to the Hammond Council. It's my fault that it appeared before you, it's my fault that it passed, it's my fault that it signed. I realized after all that what a big mistake I made. So, I went back to my team, and I told them, "I am completely off of this train, we made a huge mistake, and I want to reverse it." And that's what we started doing. Before the commotion, for instance, there's a big petition out there, and I understand why there's a petition out there, and there's a lot of signatures on it, and a lot of angry comments, and I understand why there's a lot of angry comments and signatures on there. I get it, okay? But this isn't as a result of the commotion, this was going last week. Maybe we didn't do a good enough job telling you we reversed course, but in the mail today are about 20 letters to residents all over this area. Basically, I have a copy of the letter here, if you don't mind. "City Hammond recently took action to modify the classification of a city-owned green space in your neighborhood called Forsyth Square. We were approached by a developer who was interested in constructing new homes on this green space. This action caused concern among your neighbors. After listening to your complaints and concerns, I have determined that the best course of action is to reverse course and revert the land back to city green space and right away. I appreciate you and your neighbors for standing up for what you want your neighborhood to be now and into the future. Forsyth Square will remain a green space as it should be, and will continue to be maintained by the Hammond Port Authority as any other city-owned parkway in the city." And what we're going to do to make sure this never happens again is we're going to go, we already started the process through the Hammond City Council to replant it, we're going to replant it, S1, which is park space, and it'll be maintained, and never will you go through this again. I apologize to the residents. I hate messing up, I hate making mistakes, I would be lying to you if I told you I didn't do it, and if you went home to my house, Marissa would tell you how often I do it, but I'm just here before you right now to say this is not how we do business, I apologize to the residents that were here, and I'm sorry, okay? Councilman? Thank you. Thank you. All right. If you guys don't mind, Councilman, I don't know if anybody-
Anybody have any questions on that?
I have more subjects I wanted to touch on, but I wanted to get, you will see a cleanup ordinance come before you that's going to re-designate this back to park space, and we'll never be able to subdivide park space.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski.
Thank you. Thank you for listening to the residents and for their petition that they offer you. You know, I had people calling me and saying, "Well, they really didn't know much about it, and there weren't really good foundations laid about what was coming until it was appearing it was going to be done." But then people said, "Well, he's got a parkway in front of his house, and there's one on Bering, and should those be housing too?" Or, you know, I guess you'd want to think about how it would feel if that were done in their house.
Can I interject, Councilman? That's exactly the issue I brought up with my team. I was like, "We are basically telling people we're building houses on Knickerbocker Parkway, or Indy Illy, or Bering," that's exactly the example I use, Councilman. And then I started peppering my team with questions like, "Who gets the back end of the house? Which houses get to look at the back end of the house?" This site did not work for a number of reasons, and it's 100% my fault, I'm standing before you apologizing.
I thank you for rescinding that push to have it done, and I really-
And I'm glad the residents stood up, Councilman Mark, I really am. They woke me up. I was in a funk, and I should have been listening, and I apologize, Councilman Mark.
I want to thank the residents for the calls, the emails, the blistering sentiments about what was happening. Thank you for that. This is how government is supposed to work, and we appreciate you coming out for this. Thank you so much.
I do. Thank you. I appreciate everybody being here.[502.02][502.02](APPLAUSE). I'm getting applauded for making a mistake, I appreciate it, so. Hesville survey on stop trains. I know Councilman, excuse me, Chief of Staff Phil Talon talked last time about the proposed Governor's Parkway Bridge, is what we call it. Governor's Parkway, because it's going to link up to Morton High School, was a good name for the project. This is a project, it's about $11 million, $3.5 million payable by the city Hammond, the rest is covered by the state. The purpose of this train, excuse me, the purpose of this bridge is to get us over the Norfolk Southern tracks with the perennially stopped trains in Hesville. Funny enough, today, as I was driving around the city Hammond, sitting dead stop blocking all intersections in Hesville was the Norfolk Southern train, just like every day, it's funny, we're talking about this today, but the problem is happening today, just like it's going to happen tomorrow, just like it's going to happen next week and the week after that. Now, this bridge goes through one of the natural areas of Hesville. There are other natural areas of Hesville, in fact, there's a state, well, it's not a state park, it's a county park in Hesville that's way nicer than this, and just a couple blocks to the north, but nonetheless, I would not be, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that this plan is somewhat controversial with those that are concerned with the environment. I acknowledge that hundreds of trees will have to be cut down to make way for this bridge, and each tree that's cut down will be replanted on a two-for-one basis. Absolutely. So, what we did, we decided, I know we talked about this in the past between the council and I, to send a survey out to everybody basically in Hesville. The boundaries for this were 165th to the north, 8094 to the south, Kennedy to the west, Grand Avenue to the east. It's most of Hesville. If you live east of Grand Avenue, it's not that we don't consider you in Hesville, we just think that you're probably going to use Klein Avenue, and you're not going to go across those railroad tracks anyway. That's why we cut the line there. Those surveys, it's the biggest survey we've ever done. It's more like a political survey, gauges how much you're into this, how concerned you are about the parkland, how often you get stopped. I do have a copy of the survey on Go Hammond right now, if you're interested in seeing it. We sent those out this week as well, so not only did we send the letters to Robertson residents about Forsyth Park, we sent the surveys out today. We have a deadline on the surveys, they come back by December 7th, and on December 8th, Mayor's Night Out at Scott Middle School will unveil the final results. So, that's going out. Yes, sir.
Mayor, the replanting of the trees, two-to-one, where will they go?
Good question. It doesn't have to go in that area, obviously, we would keep them as close as possible, Councilman Mark, but there's no, like, requirement, but we would put them, I think it'd be only proper to put them in Hesville, obviously, but we could put 2,000 trees, or whatever, you know, if it's 800 to get knocked down, 1,600 trees, on a two-for-one basis.
Thanks.
Yes, sir. Any other questions on this? Councilman Scott, I know you cover this district, I don't know if you have anything you want to add. This is, what we look for with this is overwhelming consensus, I'll be honest with you. This is a, this is a fix for the stop train problem. I know that's the number-one problem I get, and we all get multiple complaints, stop trains and Mayor's Office is by far the number-one complaint. I feel like this solves a lot of the problems. Councilman Scott?
I agree, Mayor. This has always been a problem in Hesville, whether you've been there 70 years, 50 years, 20 years, we all know that's the biggest problem in Hesville, doesn't matter. Actually, today I missed the committee meeting because I got caught by a train. Usually, I try to give myself plenty of time, knowing that's a possibility, especially where I'm at, but trains have always been the main, main problem in Hesville, it's always been that way. Back in the '70s, there was a group that played school dances, and their name was Train City Blues, they came from Hesville. In 1973-
Yeah.
I mean, that, I mean, that's what the situation is, it's been that way forever.
Hammond's a big city, we have trains all over our city, this is really the only part of the city where I see trains, and I go all over the city. This is really the only part of the city where I see trains stop for hours at a time. I mean, you'll get trains in all of our districts, but in Hesville, they park, and that's incredibly frustrating, divides Hesville, you can't get across it. So, this is going to be the way over it, to help our kids get to school, because if you're traveling 173rd, right by Parrish's Barber Shop, you're going to go up over the bridge, and when you come down, you'll land, and you have the option to take a right-hand turn, heading north. Right-hand turn will get you over to, on 171st, over to Morton High School, or you can continue a little bit further north, where it's going to ease you to the west, where you'll link up with Parrish Avenue. So, it's a great option, gets you to Morton, gets you to Scott from 173rd, I think it's a good plan, so.
Mayor, can I just say, because I've been questioned by a few residents in my district, I want to go on the record now as saying I support this plan. Like I've said to Councilman Rakos, and to yourself, that you know how much overtime money that train got me when I was working at the post office? And ironically, just like Councilman Rakos, today, that thing was blocking Kennedy Avenue for what, an hour? Longer. I tried to get by there around-
I went around.
-1:30 or 2:00.
Well, I went to go pick up my grandson, at 3:30 he was there, 3 o'clock he was there. He was there at 5:00, it's probably still there now.
So, that's all I wanted to say. Councilman Kowinski?
In the event, for some reason, it really doesn't fly in Hesville, I would like you to consider 11 million over the CSX and South Shore tracks, either on Calumet, Holman, or Sheffield.
That'd be great.
Would you go along with that?
Oh, definitely. I, I would just-
All right, thank you, Councilman Mark.
We have a place for it if you don't-
Thank you, Councilman Mark, I appreciate that.
He had a, he had a place for the hockey rink, too, if it didn't come to the f- so.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, also on Calumet and Fayette and that area there.
Yes, sir.
And I know we got a, that overpassed, less than a block away, but sometimes those, those, traffic is blocked on the north all the way to White Castle, I mean, to the CSX.
That's a bad one also, I agree.
Okay, and, and while we're on trains, also, every time that I meet with Hammond Elderly Building, or the Humphrey Building, or the folks from the Renaissance, they always mention the quiet zone that it's just needed, not only in Second District, throughout the city. And a lot of, just about every city around here has that, and we're the only ones. I, I know it's expensive to rebuild the street and reconstruct it to whatever standards the rural people and the state requires, but that ought to be planned somewhere along the line.
Basically, Mayor, that trains are like fireworks in the state of Indiana, correct? As much as we hate them, there's not a lot we can do about them.
There's nothing we can do locally, there's nothing City Hammond could do about trains blocking intersections, there's nothing the state of Indiana could do about trains blocking intersection. The only people that can do it is Congress, US Senate, and the President of the United States, that's it.
And we got this grant from the state, how many years ago, Councilman Rakos?
Years.
The process started two or three years ago.
Yeah, this has been years. And it's very well planned out, we recently started getting pushed back from environmental groups. I was being accused of lack of transparency, and that I wasn't listening to people, much like the current situation with Forsyth Square. I think this situation is far more dire with the number of complaints we get about stop trains in Hesville, and I feel like we're doing the right thing. Unlike Forsyth Square, where I felt like we made a mistake, I feel like we're doing the right thing on this, I just want confirmation from the residents. I really feel like this is the right thing. I wouldn't be doing it if I didn't feel like it. When I looked at the Forsyth Square situation with fresh set of eyes, I realized I was making a mistake, which is why we went backwards. I never felt like this on the Hesville project, let's be clear. I think this is the answer. I am getting pushed back, and I want to do this in the interest of transparency. And it's very blunt, it's very, not one-sided at all. It's like, a lot of trees are going to get knocked down, a natural area is going to be developed, but it will get you over the trains, and we do have the money. I think it's important, but I hope the residents back me up on that. And last, another controversial topic, nothing but today, executive order 2145 and executive order 2147, further tightening the screws, so to speak, on employees who are not vaccinated. We're currently somewhere north of 60% in that ballpark for total employees vaccinated. I'm vaccinated times three, by the way, for the record. I lead by example, got Moderna first and second, I got them in March, and I just got my booster. I know thousands of people, and I know most of whom have received all their doses, and they didn't get sick, and they didn't get crazy side effects. I think this is the way out. I feel like I need to be a better leader in the city Hammond for our close to 1,000 employees. So, we decided to, because that 40% that's still holding out, you know, we've offered incentives twice, and then we said, "Okay, you're on your own, if you get sick, you've got to use your own personal days and vacation days, we're not going to cover you if you're not vaccinated." So, those are three attempts we've made already, so now we're saying, under executive order 2145, all new employees and all part-time employees to the city Hammond have to be vaccinated. We pay a good wage, we have great jobs. So, if you want to be a new employee, I don't think we should add to the problem of unvaccinated employees. So, we signed that executive order effective immediately. I also signed an executive order that said, "If you're a current Hammond City employee and you put in for a job promotion, transfer, internal bid, can't do it unless you're vaccinated." That's the next step, and what will be the final step, which is when OSHA mandates all employers with 100 or more employees, which qualifies the city Hammond, to receive mandatory vaccination. That's the next step. I'm waiting for the federal government to do what I anticipate them to do, and when they do, the city Hammond has no choice unless we're going to sue the government, we have no choice but to implement this. So, I'm trying to get the employees ready, I hope the council agrees with what I've done. I was hoping maybe you guys could do some type of resolution, opposing or affirming, hopefully affirming, so that the employee base feels like we're all on the same page. But, so, 2145, I'll, could we make sure we get copies to the council of 2145 and 2147? And then maybe on the next council meeting, you guys have some ideas to change them, or you want to affirm what we've already done, I'd appreciate it personally. If you guys want to change it, then let's change it, and, you know, we'll talk. But I think they're both good policies, and my job is to try to get that 60% number to 100%.
Mr. President.
So, that's all I got. Thank you, council.
Councilman Emerson?
Yeah, I, I agree. Not only, there are some that feel that to be on a ventilator for a month or longer, that you have to pay for it, but maybe that's a little harsh, but I, you know, I get tired, I've been vaccinated three times, too, and I, I get a little tired of people that are anti-vax, and yet I'm supposed to go by all the rules, and, and, and then they, they don't seem to care, for one reason or another. Maybe they're medically challenged, I don't know what, not all, but some are anti-vax, and it's like, you know, we're never going to get rid of this thing if, if, so I agree with this-
Thanks, Councilman.
...resolution or whatever.
And Councilman, for the record, in our policies, we do have exceptions for religious purposes and for medical reasons, just like federal government does, so I wanted to point that out. Any other questions?
Anybody else have any questions for the mayor?
Sorry for the long report. Nice to see you guys.
Item number four, approval of the minutes.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Motion to accept the minutes from November 8, 2021, please, on file, please.
Second.
Motion's been made to accept the minutes and place on file by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres. Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. You guys want to keep going, or just take a short break until everybody?
Keep going.
Let's go.
Okay. Item number five, approval of the claims.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
We make the motion, we pay claims dated 11/15/2021, and any of the claims dated Claim number 5640 through claim number 5991, inclusive in the amount of $10,267,357.80.
Second.
Motion's been made to accept the claims by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number six, public hearings, there are none. Item number seven, communications. Does anybody have any communications?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I received notification that the Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association will resume their meetings effective Tuesday, November 30th, in their new home at the Hammond Mohawks Athletic and Conservation Club. So, they wanted me to make that announcement here today. So, Pulaski Park will resume meetings after better-than-a-year layoff due to the pandemic, and that will be Tuesday, November 30th, 6:30 at the Hammond Mohawks. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any communications?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
On, we just want to put this on the record, on December 16th, we will be doing the annual holiday treats giveaway, where we are accepting donations of new toys for the kids. There was also an email sent out to all of the council as well, but we wanted to let the residents know that they'll be on the lookout for a form for them to sign up for the holiday treats giveaway on December 16th. And that was pretty much it.
Any other communications? I'm sorry, was, did you ask me a question, or no? I'm sorry. Is there any other communications?
Mr. President.
Where was that going to be located at?
It'll be located at the Civic Center.
Councilman Tyler.
I just want to thank everybody who had a hand in helping us coordinate and facilitate the Thanksgiving turkey giveaway this past weekend. Thanks to last minute contribution from the Hammond firefighters, we were able to give away 212, I went back in county-
209.
Nope, I went back in county, it was 212.
It was 12, okay.
So, we gave away 212 turkeys to Hammond residents. It was a great event. I want to thank the Hammond City Council, I want to thank the Food Bank of Northwest Indiana, I want to thank the Ministry Alliance and the Affilia Steen Center as a partnership with all of those organizations. This was our second year in a row doing it, so excited to continue to build on that event, and hopefully do it even bigger next year. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any communications?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
I also want to thank the city council for your prayers during the time of our loss of my uncle, and me not being here at the last meeting, so I thank you guys for those prayers, we do appreciate that.
Anyone else? Under communications? Does anyone else have any communications? Does anyone else have any communications? Hearing none, communications are closed. Item number-
Eight.
Committee reports.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Council of the House is going to bring out 21-45 this evening.
Thank you. Is there any other community reports?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I have the Capitol Improvement Board report for the November 15th meeting. We approved $4,954.48 for the Chicago Street Phase 1 change order. It was change orders actually number 13, 14, and 15, and that was related to utility work. The next meeting of Capitol Improvements will be on December 6th, that will be at 4:00 for the work study session, and the meeting at 5:00 PM following. Also, Mr. President, the community and Crime Watch meetings that are coming up, as Councilman Kalwinski just stated, the Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association will meet Tuesday, November 30th, at the Mohawks at 6:30 PM. As he said, it's been a while since they were able to meet due to COVID, so please As he said, it's been a while since they were able to meet due to COVID, so please come out and share your thoughts and concerns in your neighborhood. Edison Community Watch will meet Wednesday, December 1st, 6:30 p.m. at Edison School. Our chief of police is going to be the guest speaker, along with our chief of staff, and we're going to discuss neighborhood concerns in the area of Anchor Inn. Edison Community Watch on the Road is going to meet Thursday, December 9th, 1:00 p.m. at the Golden Manor Senior Building. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, December 7th, at what time, councilman?
6:30.
6:30 p.m. That's at the VFW on Holman Avenue. Hessfield Crime Watch will meet Thursday, December 16th, 6:00 p.m.
No.
No?
No.
Okay, scratch that one. Okay. Irving Community Watch will meet Friday, December 3rd, at Irving School at 9:15 a.m. The Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, December 9th, 6:30 p.m. at Calumet College, and there will be a meeting at Hammond Elderly on December 9th at 1:00 p.m. This is an opportunity for all of our residents to come out and find out what is happening in your neighborhood, and to get some safety tips. One of the tips that we've been passing forward lately is to not let your vehicle running while you want to warm it up, whether it's in your driveway, whether it's at the gas station when you're going in to get gas, don't let your vehicle running. That is an invitation for somebody to come and take your vehicle, and then your purse, your wallet, whatever that's in the car, is gone. Also, there was an incident over on Indianapolis Boulevard. A woman was getting gas, and somebody showed her a gun at the gas station. Please be aware of your surroundings, whether you're at a stop sign, stoplight, at a gas station, no matter where you are, look around. Make sure that nobody is lurking around you, because although this is the season for giving, it's also the season for taking, by some of the ne'er-do-wells. So please, come out to a crime watch meeting, get some additional tips, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any committee reports? Does anybody else have any committee reports? Hearing, no more. Committee reports are now closed. Ordinances, third and final passage.
Ordinance 2145, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, in ordinance creating new funds, Fund 274, Fund 277, Fund 279, Fund 289, for physical year 2022, Comprehensive Highway Injury Reduction Program, CHIRP grant funds.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Final passage of 21-45.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion?
President.
Councilman Spitali.
This comes before us every year, but this is for creating new funds for future grants. This is not money that's being moved around. When the funds come in, then the new funds come into place. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpool.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed. Moving on to introduction of ordinances.
Ordinance 2146, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, in ordinance fixing the salaries for elected city officials for the City of Hammond, Indiana, commencing January 1st, 2022, bid ordained by the common council of the City of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of 2146, refer to council as a whole, on December 13th at 5:15 p.m.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Spitali.
These are the salaries for mayor, clerk, and councilpeople.
Any other, anybody else have any further discussion? Is there any further discussion on it? Hearing none. Clerk Darryl Roakaw.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpool.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 2147, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, in ordinance authorizing the city controller to transfer funds from one line item to another within various city 2021 budgets.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of 2147, refer to council as a whole, with the meeting on, committee meeting on December 13th at 5:15 p.m.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, and seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
This ordinance is something that we do every year, transferring funds from one line item to another.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I just want to, I guess, make a motion that we correct the agenda. This has 2121 budgets and not 2021 budgets. Just wanted to correctly reflect what we're actually voting on.
Is it so noted? Clerk?
Yes.
It's corrected, it's on the agenda, is the 21...
21.
21 budget. I hope I'm not still here by then, so... The record will be corrected on that, but...
Yes.
Thank you.
It's just on the agenda, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The ordinance is...
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Calwinski.
Quick question, which rainy day fund is, are all these passing into? Is it the one, which one is it?
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Mayor.
Yes, Mayor, you go right ahead.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We created, what I call the real rainy day fund, when we created last year, that's the one you can't take money out of. When Heather was controller, she had a fund that she used, that she called the rainy day fund, but it was more like a holding fund for our energy efficiency debt payments. So the savings we would get from energy efficiency debt payments would go into Heather's rainy day fund, and eventually be paid out to cover the debt payments for the energy efficiency. That old fund is not going to be called rainy day anymore. The real rainy day funds, the one we created with the new ordinance last year, Councilman Mark, this is not that fund. This is the holding fund for energy efficiency payments. You'll notice where the money's coming from is the same grant.
And do we change that name by ordinance?
It's going to next year anyway, Councilman Mark. All of Heather's, excuse me, all of Megan's accounts have to go to four numbers, and all of them have to be renamed. It has to come before you anyway, that rainy day, the old rainy day fund's going away.
Do we have a new name for it already?
In 2022, you'll never, the rainy day fund you'll see will be the one we created, Councilman Mark. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpool.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 2148, sponsored by Councilman Calwinski, petitioned by Nicholas Hurst, Betty Sert, and Daniel Hurst. In ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the City of Hammond for zoning purposes, and amending ordinance number 8514, in ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the City of Hammond, including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the comprehensive land use plan amended for property commonly known as 2350 White Oak Avenue, Whiting, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Calwinski.
I move that 21-48 pass through first and second readings, be referred to council as a whole on 12/13/21 at 5:00 p.m., and to have a, to publish an intent to consider for 12/13/21's ISO move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Calwinski, and who was it seconded by? Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Calwinski.
This is a rezoning that's going from commercial to residential R-2, and just a brief history, and I'll go over that again. Next time, this was the old Dusty's Tap that the Dostotny family owned and occupied for a long time, and was sold recently to a developer who is taking the four existing units, apartment units, and remodeling them, and has taken the bar out and will make that a fifth unit. So it's no longer serving a commercial purpose, and that's why the rezoning to R-2, and we'll look forward to seeing if that'll pass on 12/13 for third and final. The developer is here, Mr. Nick Herbst, as well as some of his fellow developers, and the city planner is here, too, should anybody have any questions.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Roll call on the motion for first and second reading.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpool.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed. That concludes the introduction of ordinances. Item number 11, resolutions.
Resolution 21R29, sponsored by Councilman Calwinski, a resolution to reappoint Melissa Farrell to the Gaming Advisory Committee of the City of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilman Calwinski.
I move for passage of 21R-29.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Calwinski, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Calwinski.
Ms. Farrell has served on the gaming committee for a number of years ever since I stepped down from it, and has been very attentive, going to all the meetings and taking that work seriously, and I'm happy that she will follow up with this reappointment. She was eager to go back on board, and I want to thank her in advance of the vote. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpool.
Yes. Let the record show the resolution passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Resolution 21R30, a resolution to reappoint Miriam Soto Presley to the Hammond Redevelopment Commission, sponsored by Councilman Calwinski.
Mr. President.
Councilman Calwinski.
I move for passage of 21R-30.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Calwinski, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Calwinski.
Miriam Soto Presley has served on the redevelopment commission at least eight years, and has been a vital part of that commission, serving as a commissioner, but also serving as a translator when necessary, as she's bilingual and teaches bilingual classes. She has been called upon at times to be able to help residents who are trying to navigate the process by interpreting for them what their needs are, and helping them get through the processes that are required for what they're pursuing in the redevelopment commission. I'm happy that she's willing to re-up for another year, and looking forward to her serving in the same capacity. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing, no further discussion, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpool.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed. That concludes resolutions. Item number 12, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I had a chance to speak with Mr. Greg Myrkes, and at this time, I would like to reappoint him to the redevelopment commission, make a motion to reappoint him to the redevelopment commission.
Second.
Motion's been made to reappoint Gregory Myrkes to the redevelopment commission by Councilman Tyler, and seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Calwinski, I'm sorry.
I look forward to his re-up, but do we have to wait for the paperwork before we vote on this?
We can do it as a motion from the floor. We've done, we've done, we've done it new and unfinished before, so... Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpool.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed. Is there any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I apologize, under communications, I should have also thanked various community volunteers that came out for the turkey giveaway, as well as the Hammond Police Department. We didn't have any issues with traffic control, because they were there to assist with that, so wanted to thank those groups again for their support with our events this past weekend.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that has anything under, new and unfinished business? Is there any other new and unfinished business? Hearing none, new and unfinished business is closed. Public expression, and forgive me if I mispronounce your name if you're still here, is that Lita White? I'm just... Arlola.
Lita.
Leah, there you go.
Distinguished members of council and Mayor McDermott, my name is Lita White, and I'm here on behalf of the residents who opposed the Forsyth Square Development Project. On behalf of the hundreds of residents who signed our petition, I would like to personally thank the mayor for his sincere and brave actions here tonight. People tend to be passionate about the things they care about, and these hundreds of residents are passionate and invested in their community. So we submit this petition to you tonight in the hope of encouraging open communication and conversation about the Robertsdale community, and how to work together to make it the best it can be. And thank you, Mayor, for listening.
Thank you.
I'll take the petition for the record.
For the record, he'll take the petition. Is there a Beth Minetti here?
I think my time is up.
You yield your time. Is there a Tim King still here? No Tim King? Is there a Casey King? No Casey King? Is there a Kathy Shay? No Kathy Shay? Is there a James Gutierrez? State your name and address, and you have three minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council, and I'd like to thank, well, my name is James Gutierrez. I'm from Forsyth, or I'm from Stewart Court in the Robertsdale neighborhood, and I was here to voice my opposition to the development, which now is moot, because thankfully, this issue has been taken off the table. But just to give you an perspective, as you were looking forward to other areas that are going to be developed, as you look at people's homes, and we all see just buildings, you've got to remember, like in my case, my house, my home, is a legacy for my children and grandchildren. So they're either going to, when I die, my wife dies, because it's my second marriage,